Randy, you've been here. Yep, typically we support the CDP, don't we?
Um, yes.
Yes. Yeah, I think we've done it for years and years. All right. Let's call the meeting in order at seven, two. So, Pledge of Allegiance. Please believe this.
Yep.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And as you're probably which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
You hopeful?
Ines.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Frank.
Here.
David.
Here.
Beavers. Leonard.
Yes.
Frank.
Here. Need public comment.
I'm here for one and two on the agenda, so. Sounds good.
Right, first would be our consent agenda or Treasurers Report, Bills, and Approval of the City Councilments.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
For.
On the paper? It's all on paper?
Yep.
Aye.
Aye.
She carries. Items business.
For the.
This is the resolution that we have to have um posted uh something in the paper, they have everybody in the public that we got one until five per day. You can meet him grant to do our mission. It's one more, they have to have it for the great, so.
Did you say you're here for that?
Yeah, I can answer any uh questions. I was here a couple of months ago talking about this and uh things are moving ahead um. Kim's right, it's it is a lot of paperwork and a lot of hoops and hurdles, but um it looks obviously very favorable from Mishtha, Michigan State House Development Authority. Move ahead um and that would help us with the infrastructure uh related to the railroad street property. That's the site that specifically uh we're working on here and sounds like based on talking to Kim uh the other aspects are falling in order. We've got, I think, a purchase agreement uh with Alan Edwin Homes uh and probably the best news apart from the grant. Uh it sounds like the environmental work came back uh from fright terror and the site's clean to be able to build homes on. So uh which I think is I want to say shocking in a good way, but normally these old industrial sites, you know, you gotta clean something up, you know. Uh specifically for residential development, so uh but they they tested it and we're we're good to go and so I think it's all it's all lining up. So this is the grant though that uh that would end up ultimately running through the city. Uh you would work with uh your um engineers, which is, I think, C two A E, right? Yeah, they're very good. I actually talked to them yesterday on a couple of things. Uh they know how to do this kind of stuff, so you got a good team in place. Uh and then Alan Edman is gonna be there, you know, and you know, our group, so I think all the right partners are at the table. Uh to bring this whole thing together, so um and we did dedicate um as part of our new like I mentioned, we had a we had a grant, we got a renewal of a grant through Cook uh Cook Family Foundation in Waso. And we have, as a couple of weeks ago, we have dedicated those hours necessary from Lion Bear to be able to support the city and all the paperwork. We've dedicated hours from that grant to support the city on it, so those costs will be covered uh going forward, so. So I think it's coming together, but yes, this tonight is just more paperwork to keep things moving.
Justin.
Yeah, um.
I I'd like a quick recap of I've been thinking about it, what's in it for the city?
Oh.
When the dust settles.
Yeah, yeah.
What's in it for the city?
Yeah, that's a that's fair question. Um well, uh I think a few things, Tim. Uh the first and foremost, I think there's absolutely a need for more housing in Langsberg. Um you know, we every community is different um in terms of what type of housing and price points and things like that, you know, but what I have heard from you know, local leaders, government leaders, business leaders, education here, um you know, people wanna live here. Uh they wanna move here or they wanna have a better place to live in the city. And there's just not a lot of inventory out there, so so this is gonna build new housing. Uh which I think is great. It's going to be family style uh housing um in terms of, you know, three, four bedroom. They're specifically trying to attract uh families, which I think is great.
Uh median income?
The uh, yeah, I don't know what the uh median income is here, but it'll be um uh
It's low to medium and certain big certain ones have to be.
Yeah, the the price points are gonna be I can't remember. I don't quote me on this.
Seems like you, if I recall sixteen.
Sixteen sixteen hundred, is that what you say? I was gonna say sixteen eighteen hundred, you know, for more of a family, which is still not, you know, super cheap, but um to Kim's point, um there are certain things that have to be followed in terms of incomes and reporting incomes and all that to qualify for the grant, uh but Alan Edwin knows these terms and they feel comfortable, they can meet those terms and get good tenants that will occupy, you know, uh these home. The other thing, so so more families, good for the schools, more places for kids. Uh but the thing that really excites me too about this deal is this is gonna help downtown businesses because you're going to have, you know, I think it's fourteen, maybe fourteen units, I think, you know, and then you put families, you're talking, you know, thirty thirty to forty new residents right in the walkability in downtown. So thinking about, you know, shops, restaurants. People will be able to just write, they'll be able to walk to it.
Downtown, but yeah, an increase in downtown, but.
It increased in downtown. Anytime you, in my personal opinion, I've seen this, I've been doing this a long time. Anytime you can bring more people living in downtown. They're less likely to get in their car and drive out of town to spend their money elsewhere. They can walk in there, you know, go over to Tanks or Two Dog or Twilligers or I can't get them all straight, so let them.
Two dogs already.
Yes, um the um uh it it's good. It keeps money, you know, into downtown. The other thing too is when you build new housing. You know, that increases, you know, the value of other homes, I think, uh in the area as well. Now, this is kind of a unique property, right? It's a, you know, kind of a downtown site, so that's it. The other thing too is that's a blighted property, um you know, it's it's doing nothing right now, right? I mean, it's just sitting there and we're gonna bring that back to use. Uh the grant's gonna help improve the infrastructure in the area. Um so that's good as well.
How much was the grant?
Uh, Kim, you got that?
And that is for infrastructure.
Correct, which is why it's going to the city, so it's not.
It's one point four million dollars.
I can't.
So you work with your city engineer on that, uh you know, get everything. You'll have to be bid out, you know, like a lot of the grants.
It's like fifteen.
You know. The city's gotten over the years, so um. Yeah.
So that's supposed to be a decimal point in this.
Sorry, a hundred and fifty, a hundred and fifty or one point five?
Yeah, so this says one point five million.
Oh.
There should be a hundred and forty nine thousand nine hundred and seventy.
Yeah.
Eight dollars and zeros.
So it's a hundred and fifty?
Yes.
Okay, so it's not huge, but yeah, it's supposed to cover the cost.
Yeah, I think it's mainly sewer. Yeah, I can't remember.
Uh, yeah.
That's the only thing we've got.
Water, you know, public water. Yeah, so I think when you look at it collectively. You know, because the question would be too, if we didn't support this and we this this project kind of maybe went, what else would go there? You know, what else would fit there? That's a legitimate question.
Yeah.
But these guys are committed, they build a quality product, um they build homes.
You worked with them.
Oh, several years, yeah, yeah. And I remember them coming over here um and touring and they really it's funny, they they have their own metrics and they really liked Langsberg right off the bat and they, I think why is they know within Chiwasi County. Langsberg is a little bit more affluent than maybe a Waso or Duran. It would be because of, you know, the residents maybe making a little more money and working in Lansing. Things like that. So they knew right off the bat, they wanted to build something in the city. And we just had to find the right property, you know, we toured around, we looked at the, I think you guys own a site on Treat Street. Uh but they really liked it and they got this concept, which I think you see, you know, it's kind of a, almost a townhome. You know, that concept. I think it's gonna fit in really good. There, so yeah, I think you weave all of those positive things together. I think it's a great win for the city. It's a great redevelopment for for the community.
And the TIF.
Yes.
Are we gonna get any taxes? At all up until things are paid off?
So the good news, and I I haven't I don't crunch those numbers, so I will talk.
Because certainly with that comes demand for city services.
Absolutely.
And that costs money.
It, yep, so I I have two thoughts on that, Tim, um and I'm speaking for myself here, um. Getting getting a grant to pay for some of that reduces that burden for the TIF because normally infrastructure is part of what you have to collect money for, so that's it. What that should do actually shrink the timing of of what that is. Now, to specifically answer your question, um the value zero, they build the homes, that money gets collected for a period of time. It's not every um like every tax, there's like one or two things that don't get collected, that still get paid. I think school debt is one.
As I recall, it was just the city portion that the TIF affects.
Yeah, it it's it's a couple of things, but but here's the thing, and to specifically answer your point, um and this is a conversation you need to have with Alan Edwin Homes. But this is something that um we've seen. I've seen Corona, um you might wish to talk to the Corona leadership about it, um if it's a concern, and I'm sure it is a concern from the council. Um sometimes um what Corona does is they do some type of a it's not a tax, but it's some sort of a, I think it's a municipal services agreement. So in exchange for offering this, you know, tax benefit to a company. There's some separate side agreement that the community has with the developer that gives some money specifically to the city. Okay, because normally you pay property taxes, right? It's the city, the county, the library. Your concern is having city taxes to serve it with police and fire and all that, right? So that is something you might wanna look at as part of that tip process, and if you're going to forego those taxes for five, ten, fifteen years, whatever, but you still wanna get a little money. You negotiate that side agreement to get a, I think it's called a municipal services agreement. So if you wanna talk to Joe and Merrill Lee over at Corona, they've done this um a few times, so that might be something to look at. I hear that concern a lot because you want development, you want growth, but you also gotta pay for all your services.
Well, that's what we're we can't do roads and sidewalks as we are. And we have to go get bonds for it.
No.
That I don't think they're at true value. Um so that's why I'm.
It's more diligent. I had this conversation with a lot of cities and villages in this county because every one of you are strapped for cash because of the way local governments are funded. You know, and I think the good thing about this though too in a selling point for the TIF is the development's paying for itself. So the good news is you're not paying for a new development out of the general fund, which is positive. But that new development demands services too. So um so that's something I'd look at if I were you.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's a good.
Yeah.
Good thought.
Yeah.
That I
Talk, talk to Corona, talk to Corona because um they've, I know they've done this, that is, they have the same concern you do and they've got to pay for services, so. I I look, we're on his model.
Today we're looking for a motion to approve Living Board with the Mr. Rand, have patience.
CDBK. I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty five ten.
I will second that.
Uh I'll just say I support moving forward with it. I'm just totally not comfortable with all the concepts yet. I think and I'll use the term shoving sixteen units in that small area. Isn't I mean, I just see some of that problematic. The the businesses that you think are gonna benefit from it, they're losing parking spaces, even though it's a city lot. That whole row of curbside is gone. Um, how how I I walk by there every time I look at and think, how are you putting sixteen family units in here, assuming they get two parking spaces each? We live in subdivisions where we get two, two and a half, and that's not even enough, so see that. It could flow into the public parking space, negatively impact those businesses. So I I I'm not opposed to the concept, I'm just leery of some of the, I I think there's some negative going into this as well. And and again, I'm not totally up on the TIF and all that, but we're looking at having to redo the billiards and all of those type of activities where sixteen families, something more waste in there is gonna be built to. So.
They won't pay for soup.
Uh that's one part of that isn't included in the TIF. Day one that we hook them up, they're all paying our sewer.
I I'm pro development, I'm just saying that, it's because I'm approving the, I mean, a rest vote doesn't mean it's a in 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 game vote, yes.
I think to, you know, we're we're looking for for an actual house and what the design is and where they're gonna, but it's gonna be for our property, which we've kinda had a hard time getting. I don't know if they even have it up yet and running.
Because I think what you're bringing up, they're legitimate concerns and I would I don't know if we have a councils on planning commission, but you know, these are definite questions and concerns when they bring forward a site plan for consideration to the city, that should be those those need to be voiced.
And I think the site plan would either alarm or lay our concerns to rest if we saw actually this is what we propose.
Yep.
That.
And I and I've asked for that. It's hard to visualize that many houses in that area, but you know, we're trying to like see the big picture and how far they're going back and where the road's gonna go.
Over bedroom and a twenty by forty, so obviously they're two story.
Yes.
Yeah.
Um.
And part of this, part of my hope too is, I mean, they're a big builder, right? You know, they're they're one of the biggest, they might be the biggest production builder in Michigan. They're doing this in a lot of other communities. So that cuts both ways, right? You know, they're not from here, so they don't necessarily know Langsberg as well. At the same time, my belief would be they've worked in other communities like Langsberg with these density concerns and they've found a way to make the work, you know, and they've obviously made money doing it, so. Uh I think they've done their homework, what's that?
Where are they from?
Uh Kalamazoo area, they're headquartered Portage, I think. Uh the guy we're working with, Brian Farkas, who you met. He actually lives down in Lake Ipsal. But he's all over Michigan and they love Chiwasi County. Um they they like how welcoming uh Langsberg's been, Duran, uh they wanna do more here. Uh they'd have a goal of building like twenty five hundred units in the next few years. They they wanna go hard, solve the state's workforce housing. So. But legitimate, I would definitely bring up those concerns. Those are reasonable.
Tim, can I make an amendment to my motion? I just, I just wanna make sure that the one point five million gets changed back to the hundred and forty nine thousand.
Yes, I, well, yeah, I have to. Uh yeah, I'll, I already marked it.
Okay.
Only a little typo.
Smidge, smidge and a half, but.
Unless you can get it.
All right, I mean, if we can get that, great. But I don't think we will.
No, we could figure out what you would.
All right, the motion in a second. Ready the
I'm gonna get Greg, but it's not working.
Is he trying to get in?
Yeah, but he, it's on YouTube, so I can't.
He just wanna hear.
He's just listening right now, but he was trying to get in, but I have to send him an actual link to it, so. Uh go ahead.
Any other discussion on this? Right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posted. Motion carries. Under the next thing, the CDP membership.
I make a motion to
Ross.
Yep. If you want me to set up.
Hey, this join us.
Yes, we have a motion to re-up as is with the twenty five hundred dollar membership?
Yes.
In a second.
Also.
Any discussion?
Uh so I briefly talked to Danelle about this today. Um in twenty 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 four to twenty twenty five, we didn't use it any of the access that we get by going from the one thousand dollars to the twenty five hundred. Um previous council voted on going to the thousand and then uh the old council members came in and asked us to go up to the fifteen hundred and I don't remember what the voting was, but I believe it was a split decision. Um
Are you so proposing the thousand dollar membership?
I was just discussing what we so as.
Historical.
What?
You're just giving us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um.
Um and this is bus rights?
Not there again.
No, that's that.
That's, yeah, that's later.
That's what he does.
As a community. And Justin, you can correct me, but as a community, if if the city is um partnered um and does this, the community also gets to use the resources of your organization, correct? Mm-hmm. So, um Looking Glass Terrace currently is um being assisted um.
Right.
Yes.
It's true.
Yes, and it's it's huge. We we would not, as a small nonprofit board, we would not be able to do what we're trying to do without them, so.
But would they still help Looking Glass for a thousand dollars here versus twenty five hundred? Because it looks like at twenty five hundred, you have access to billboards, task force. Media buying deals and participation to and roundtables.
We have a thousand, all right, and that's what we have. We haven't used any of that, but we've used the the thousand dollars and up to the five hundred, but we haven't used the executive level. We paid for the executive level, but we haven't taken advantage of it or used any aspect of it. I just think it's an extra fifteen hundred that we might not need to spend. I I agree we should be a part of it. But to what level?
Yeah, I'm with RJ on that. I breathe that we should be a part of it, but perhaps consider the lesser membership, which appears to support our needs and how we're gonna do it.
My mind's watering. Is there a motion?
There is, there was a per or
motion by Jody, second by Jason.
Yes. Yes. Yeah, absolutely, absolutely, if you want me to, and I'm I'm happy to answer any questions you have, yeah, it's a so to kinda give you the full picture, because I know there's newer council members here, so uh Langsberg's actually been an investor probably, I think, maybe since the very beginning, which um it's like twenty three years ago, so.
And I remember it when I was on council, I got on in two thousand, two thousand. Yeah.
Yeah, we two started oh two, Tim, yeah, and and the whole premise, and and I won't take too long, I won't belabor the story, but I just wanted to have a little context, so. The whole premise back then was uh to Jody's point. Rather than you know, the city of Langsberg, all the cities, villages, townships hiring their own economic development people by sharing basically in a uh public-private partnership, which is what we are, where we get support from our local governments and local businesses. We're able to provide those services not just to the city government, but also to the businesses in the community at a significantly reduced cost, you know, versus you having to basically hire somebody, you know, yourself, so. Our original model, um which some governments still follow, I'll admit it's a little bit of a hodgepodge, um was actually a per capita form, come on. And the model we had was uh uh two dollars per resident, uh which um you know, for Langsberg, I think, would be about twenty five hundred dollars, um and some of that's carried through, uh like Waso is actually our biggest investor, Waso gives forty thousand. Corona gives us ten thousand a year. Grant's five thousand a year, so they're a little bit less than two, so and then somewhere in there, and I don't quote me on any of this, there was some changes, um. I do think to your point again uh about benefits, I think it's a couple of things. One is sort of the specific benefits that are laid out in the document that you have in front of you, which I do think there could be value for the city to take advantage of and those specific benefits. I do recollect the conversation about specifically participating in our task forces, I think our real estate task forces, I think. That might have been what Paul about, um. Uh but then also there's sort of the specific benefits and then it's just sort of the I'll call it the general value proposition, you know, that, you know, it's a sort of a signal to say you know, what the value of what we do means to you, to the community, because those dollars allow us to have more capacity to be able to do more service. You know, in the area and less dollars obviously means less capacity to serve less clients, so. So there's some of that, I guess it's more of a softer benefit than it is a line item benefit uh in the document. Um I I will say, I'm proud of the work we've done in the city over the years. Uh once again, I know it's new to a lot of you. Uh but um you know, we don't do industrial development here, obviously, but we've really tried to support the downtown. Uh we've tried to support housing, uh we actually just had our golf outing uh over Pine Hills. We brought twenty five teams into the city. Uh a lot of people have never been here, never played golf there, which was really, really nice, you know, try to promote the city for um you know, for people to visit, visit restaurants and shop, um you know, would love to try to maybe repurpose some of the buildings, uh particularly out of outskirts. I know we've got an old grocery store we'd like to fill and the dollars you basically award us through this investment, uh that gives us the ability to do more, you know, so uh you know. To be fine, we're we're still gonna serve you no matter what level, you know, because the bottom line is, we wanna do that, we're team players, we appreciate the support we get. Uh but you know, if you were able to keep it at that current level, that would definitely allow us to be able to continue to help, you know, more.
You could get paid.
So is that more on us as the city and the city council that we have not taken advantage of these other opportunities of being on the task force and I mean, it is, when you look at the business development side, we we need that. Um is that something we're not participating in?
You you know, it's a capacity issue on your part too, right? And everybody's busy, you know, and um it's a challenge, uh you know, with that, um. I, would there be value to it in terms of engaging with other community partners and you know, specifically on real estate again, meeting with other key players, networking with other countywide stakeholders, I think there would be value in that, and I think that may have been driven or driving some of the original, was the task force participation, because some of the other stuff, frankly, yeah, you're right, it's not directly beneficial to the city, some of the benefits of the that the twenty five hundred, but like I said, I I would encourage you to think about sort of the bigger apart from the benefit list, the just the value of what we're trying to do to support the city and is that worth you know, twenty five hundred a year?
I'm putting it in the context of how much do we give capable consultants every year? C two A. Um this seems like a bargain. Twenty five hundred dollars in, to put it in context of the numbers. Uh no, we're not getting more bucks here by any means, but twenty five hundred is I think reasonable if we take full advantage of everything they offer. Um C two A doesn't come out here for some and grand duty.
Right, depends on what it is.
How many years have we been doing twenty five hundred?
This is will be the second year.
Right here, and we've never used the. Then it's above the thousand. The two years we.
We, I think we were twenty five hundred before. The meeting last year too. But we.
Yeah, there's nice three years.
Thousand, and then. One of the council members came back and asked us to reconsider.
Well, that's.
Bringing the twenty five hundred. I I believe it was a.
The motion currently is twenty five hundred.
Correct.
Yeah, correct.
I think it was a fairly even split vote. Uh, passed for twenty five hundred last year.
So for potentially having multiple motions, I guess, like do we vote on one before there's a second motion, or do you get multiple motions on the table? And. Vote on the one that's on the table, and then if that fails, it could.
Yeah, you do one of.
Should we vote on the current motion, or is there more discussion on it? If he. And this is probably. No, it's probably not the greatest way to sell a product or a service, because when you pick up the line item. There doesn't seem to be value at the twenty five hundred level, I think the point is is. You're putting in a lot of hours to get looking glass residents, new windows and doors that is going to cost in class almost zero. And there's value in the community, maybe upwards of twenty five hundred, may maybe we need to stop looking at it as a bullet pointed item. What's the value to the city, supporting this organization and supporting us? Well. Is it this sixteen unit? Bill. You laying it. We could lay that at your feet as well.
Just like, yeah, well, yeah, I mean, yeah, bring it in, bring it in resources, yeah, I mean, even other. Even other stuff, you know, thinking, you know, we do work like with Langford schools, you know, coming into career day, uh, we helped the Langsberg robotics program. It. Once again, I'm not, I don't want to go in the rabbit hole, but. You're you're a hundred percent right, we've had this issue with a couple of other investors too, when they look at the benefits, and that doesn't really, you know, I think that actually the lesson here. Um, for me, and 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 this, though, I'm glad I'm here too, uh, is. It's simply communication, right? It's making sure. That we're here, you know, or you come to our meetings or both. And you, you know, get more knowledge of all the things we're doing and all of that, and you know, the history and all that, because. Yeah, I can, I could rattle up a whole bunch of projects that we've done here, but some of them were, you know. Five, ten, fifteen, twenty, or probably Tim, when, you know, when you run before, you know. Yeah, but you you've got your context of now, and you don't have that history with me, so you're just kind of learning how to fly. So I think the lesson here is, no matter what the council decides to do. Is, you know, better communication, more visibility, um, you know, know we're here to help. Not just looking glass, we're here to help the schools, we're here to help the housing, we're here to help the downtown businesses. Bring those resources to bear. And, you know, once again, that's value that we want to be able to provide, that you don't have to hire a full-time person. Uh, for the city to do that work, we're here for you.
We need it. We're talking about putting fourteen more households in this town. They don't have a grocery store. I mean, if, what's the point of doing this development if we don't, we can't even service the residents we have? Well, and. With looking glass terrace back to that, you've got thirty. Or twenty five. Households there. And many. Did they have the ability to get in the car and drive to the next town?
So we're just, we're gonna vote on the motion, right?
Yeah. Yes. I think. Right.
You want. Motion second. The twenty five. So um.
I'm.
You want me to go low phone?
That's yes.
Yeah. And is.
Yes.
Noah?
No.
Frank?
Yes.
Did it?
No.
Frank?
No.
Leonard?
Yes. Neil.
Yeah, that's a tie.
All right. I will make a motion for. That we renew our membership at the thousand dollar partner. I'll sign that. The additional discussion. Very moment. Do you have a roll call? Vote.
Dennis?
Yes.
Noah?
Yes.
Frank?
We're on hold, um. You can say no.
Did it?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Leonard?
I'll join Julie. No.
It passed.
Oh, should that be sold? All right. Um. Yeah. Which wouldn't do. I'll do the next thing. All right, we have a plan vision has a recommendation to motion the approval of a city tree ordinance.
So be sure we talked about this a little bit here, not for sure, because I go to all the meetings, I don't remember which ones to talk about enough. This will um help us become a tree city. Which this ordinance actually keeps us. Making sure we're taking care of all of the trees. That we have in the city, including all the ones that we just received in a grant, this will also help us with other tree grants. Um. The planning commission was unanimous, unanimous about. Recommending this, we thought it was a great idea. Um, this is a board, this is a non-board, so there's no boards, they have to deal with it, it's just. Dave has to keep up with the pace. And it'll, it'll help the community in getting more grants for trees.
And this is like. Like a newspaper, is there a whole process to implementing this, I guess, or just?
Uh, this would just be an ordinance that we would um. If it passes, then we go through the ordinance, but you also just once it passes, I mean. Have to put it in the papers and pass it.
Same as the property maintenance.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
Need discussion on this, I'll make a motions to. Pass the tree grant or tree. But. That's hard. Thank you, motion, mission, motion before we discuss. And now any discussion?
So does someone have to be? Get certified in tree maintenance?
Uh, I don't think so, I think it it lists, it's like a big, you know, like these are the things we're gonna do, like bullet points like this, we're gonna take care of these trees, we're gonna make sure that they're. You know. Kept up and and. You know, make sure that we're doing exactly what it's supposed to be by this for this ordinance.
I was gonna recommend now to see if you can get. The tree city designation, if she can find a grant to partner with the Carveras to act as like the acting director of this program. Because a lot of what they're asking to be done in here should have professional consultation.
Right.
Um.
Yes.
I have access to multiple municipalities, tree ordinances, because we work with them. For other grants, I feel happy to provide those. This looks pretty well systemed with what a lot of other cities are doing, and I think it's a great thing. I think when you drive around the city of Langsberg, there's plenty of nuisance trees, we should probably be labeled that. Schedule for for placement or to become liabilities or. Or liability than they are now.
And I think that becoming a tree uh. Tree city. There'll be, you know, we'll get that, once we do the ordinance, then you become, then you apply for the tree city, and that will give you much more. Um. Information on what exactly. Big, you know, whatever tails to.
Thank you. More like didn't work this week, they they know you're not sweating. Willows back, right?
Right.
Stuff like that, yeah.
Yeah, so when I, when I found this ordinance, it actually uh was linked through the Tree City USA.
Yeah.
Um, so it. Completely came from them, which then is linked to a bunch of different trains, there's actually a. A training program um that you can get. And then do it in-house, that actually, I I mean, it was under, uh, I can't remember off the top of my head, but it was under three hundred dollars. And then they'd be certified. So.
Wow. So if we had to speak her up, then it's echoes. But yeah, the the. The resolution is. A sample from Tree City. So what's in the resolution is, or in the resolution for the ordinance is. Recommended by Tree City. And the planning commission has looked at this, yeah.
I mean, I didn't see anything. Things that got us concerns or. Yeah. The the biggest concern I think you would have is if you identified. It gives the city the ability to go up to a property owner, and so you have a tree that's in the right of way. It's diseased, it needs to be removed, it's at a home loss cost. Which. If someone can't afford to have a move, then you're gonna run into an issue, but it still needs to be addressed. The elder, it's not will be proactive. Which is something I think you should be doing in every storm, you have major. Tree damage, and if we had someone managing it, probably would.
Right.
How how do we handle that right now? I mean, I know we need this for. Well, we're trying to work towards the certification, but. How did the DPW address and identify trees right now that are nuisances?
We have a list of them.
But those, I mean, they just the city's trees.
Yes, it's the city streets, and it's one that we went around. And did. Yeah. Our tree guy that was on on train, they they said. Plus, we have, he did that. It's who he was running through that. He was worried about trees that. I'm for sure.
Yeah, it's a, it's a bonus to have Rick. Because he can, he can actually do all the tree trimming and being an outside person to. Becoming, which is a huge cost.
Well, this manages all vegetation, dude, like a couple of the corners in town where you have to like sneak out around. Education to see how to, I think, we give the city the ability and say, hey. This stuff's gotta, it's not safe. Back there believed to be. Client, so we would have to get care of all of it.
Yeah.
There's gonna be more than one that. There's multiple areas in the city.
And and those are multiple complaints we get.
Yeah.
So maybe it's it's. You know.
Yeah, like that's like woody plants, not just trees. Something something else. That nature. Neither special. Do you don't need a roll call? All in favor, motion. I'm. Posed. She carries. Okay. Motion to approve the resolution twenty five nine Langsberg credit card policy.
So. We have a credit card policy that we found. We could not find where it was was ever taken to the council. Um, to be approved, so we went back as. Far as we could go. Uh, we were like. We should have it in motion, and it should be provided at council to have. Right, right, boss. So we took it and tweaked it and made it up to date, and so that's why we have it here. It's just something we ran across, we were looking for one. And then we found it, and then we're like. When did you get it approved, when it was, I think it was an idea that just never. Okay.
I'll make an option to approve. Solution to my back. Second. All right, discussion.
So do we know who um? Will receive a credit card?
Um, right now, I just got one today. Cause they end up, it wasn't Dan's name, because we had to move it from Paula's name to Dan's name, because I mean, nobody else was uh hired in yet. So um. I got one today, given mail today. Because when I go on conference or anything else, I have to use Dan's credit card, and then I get there and I don't have the credit card, I have to call Dan and say. Can you tell them that it's okay that I lose your card? So I'm like, we need one of them, you know. And I'm the one who goes to conferences and stuff like that, so. Yeah, my name, so right now it's just Dan and I.
All right, um, I know we discussed um Sarah Danford. Has that moved forward?
Um. I can't. And the, I think. The. Library board needs to have their own credit card policy. Because um. We wouldn't. Because you have to set your own limits and and what you're. What you want. Her to be able to do with it. So I think the board, the library board has to set a policy for their own credit card or their own. Policy.
But the actual credit card is gonna be dispersed from the city.
I don't know that for sure.
That's what Danell was checking.
Yes, we were, but I don't know if we ever found.
Yes.
You did find out that. It would be from us?
We can't. Yeah, we, it can be under us, but they have to have their own policy in place on what they can spend their limits and all that. Jazz that we've already been talking about.
City, it would be under the city, but you you would have to have your own policies on how much you wanna spend, how much you can spend a month, or however you wanna write it.
So would she not be able to get a card until we?
Right. Which it didn't take very long to get it. Okay.
This, that's huge.
Does Danielle have a credit card? I mean, it says the city treasurer shall oversee issuance administration of her.
She.
I don't have one.
Yeah, she didn't get one, I just got one because I'll. Then when I need to go, like, so 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 I had it in my name, put one in my name, it's the same card.
Whose name is the account? That's.
It's City of Langston.
So they allow the city.
Yeah, it says City of Langsberg right on it with our name.
So it says City of.
But it.
Kim Hamilton.
Yes, we have, we have to give our social security numbers to get it, though.
Oh, yeah, no, typically, I know for business, they won't assign, they'll assign it to a business, but there still has to be tied to individual.
Yes, we both have our social securities tied. Social security numbers tied to the credit card, but it's under the city.
In addition to your own signing of the credit card agreement.
Yeah.
So there there is nothing in this that's gonna identify who eligible card holders are?
Um, I think, wasn't there a list? Ends up.
I mean, I didn't see when I could get here, but.
I listed. What happened?
Just so city.
Treasures overseeing the issuance and administration, and then all eligible card holders, that's why it's just like.
Oh, yeah. We can change it to specific. You wanna put.
I I'm just saying that. It it I I think it's cleaner to say, okay, these are the folks that are eligible, and then if we're gonna change that, we should come back before council and say, okay, we need another reason that. The library needs a credit card now, so we could approve this, we know that we got.
Oh, like, whereas it now, who would be approved for it next? Yeah, I mean, I'll, you know, see.
The head of department. Every head of a department could have a card.
Right.
That could be tracked.
Yes.
Through, it's all under the same type bar.
Yeah.
Should break it out of the bill.
Yeah, that's what we do right now. Yeah. So do you want to add that to the uh the resolution, or do you want it to be? You want to add to department heads? And then.
Yeah.
That's the department heads currently.
Yeah.
For the.
It just says. The city of Central, so oversee.
We amend our motion to approve this with the addition of.
Yeah.
Our heads being eligible credit card holders.
That I find when the eligible card holders are.
And that would like the specific names.
No, I, you know.
Like the treasurer.
Clerk, department head, so so we know we got five credit cards out there, this is what's up to that, right? Or whatever, I'm just. Give a number out there, but.
Then all of those are runs through the finance city. Yeah.
Like it does, like right now, it's all. You see, no, right, our bill, and giving that, so you charge the workers.
You know, discussion. Roll call, but.
Think we need because of, do you amend it, sorry? You know, and did, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and um. You wanna roll call?
I mean.
You don't.
It involved, it will involve money, no.
Um. Yeah, I mean, you can, you, it's up to you whether you wanna do a roll call or not. Roll call. Is. Just if, normally when you do a roll call, it's if somebody's against it. That's, it's not about money. It was told that a long time ago, but it's really not, it's about whether there's disagreements, then that's when you wanna do a roll call, I should bet. It was told that a long time ago, but it's really not, it's about whether there's disagreements, then that's when you wanna do a roll call, I should bet. So you will, everybody's like, yeah, for all favorite. Well, it's up to you whether you.
All in favor of that line?
Okay.
Alright, I all opposed. Motion carries.
And you can always change it too. If somebody says Nate, then you can say I wanna roll call.
By the names.
Yep.
I have number six, motion to through the set of contract. Seems it's addressed to Mr. Jordy.
Well, he's not full on.
Don't make this stuff up. Alright, so it looks like last year was fifty six hundred hours and this year it's now down to fifty two ninety five.
Yes. They give you all of their paperwork. Did you guys all study that?
Good.
Does anybody keep track of? Writership? Numbers?
Yeah, they did, they reported that to us.
That's all the extra paperwork that they.
Looks like we use one point four percent, so I recall from this one and.
Read it, okay.
Hundred and seven rights last year. Alright, I believe it's.
Total value of thirty nine thousand eight hundred and twenty eight.
What is that?
That just says, I'm sorry, that's the tax value.
Thirty nine million.
Thirty, yeah, thirty nine million. Yeah. It looks like period, like decimal points. Here too.
Oh. Any um. I guess we need a motion, I'll make a motion to. Yeah, with the Chiwase security transportation patients.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? You're known. On favor?
Hi.
I opposed. Which carries. Motion to approve the BSNA payments. I was kinda confused about. This, I mean, is it just outlining their billing?
So we don't.
Structure.
BSNA payments right now, we do um I can pay. And it wouldn't change anything as far as the customer is still gonna be charged pretty much thirty percent. Um, the difference is is this is actually cheaper for. Us to do at the end, it would go right in with all our BSNA stuff, so when we run a card, it would. Could us right now, we have to do the point and pay and then we can put it in and so it's actually cheaper. And it's hard and it's easier for us. Oh.
So we, uh, it's a no rate.
Right, right.
I may come option to. Approve BSNA.
I'll second.
Yeah, please, uh.
Or wait and pay.
Wait.
Did you second?
Any further discussion?
Is this a big setup for you guys or really?
We just have to make sure that we cancel point and pay by next month, that's why we have to have it approved.
Like August?
Yeah, like we have to have it canceled so that we don't end up with doubling. And then, no, it's not a big deal.
Hopefully.
And now I have something. She said, oh. Alright. Any other discussion? Are you known? All in favor?
Hi.
Alright. All opposed. Yes. Many here. Anybody have? Anything to highlight in the committee reports?
Um, I was gonna. Talk about the DPW. Or I mean, not DPW, DDA. Um, and brought you guys a little bit about the summer fest. Um, there, that was our last meeting last night, and that's why you don't have the minutes because. I didn't have time today to do minutes for both DPW and DDA, so. Um, so they're finalized all the um plans for um. The summer fest, which coincides with the pancake breakfast and the car show. Um, they are gonna have a the uh music tent downtown behind the PDPs. Um, we're gonna um kick off the social district that weekend. We um have a whole lineup that's it's gonna start on Thursday with music in the park. Um, then we have rock painting and um tie dye that's gonna be that night. And then Friday night, um, we have music that's gonna be playing in the tent on Friday. Um, and then Saturday is the big day where we'll have the pancake breakfast, the car show, once the car show um ends, we will start a. We've got um bounce houses that are coming, we have um. A bubble machine, bubble area for the kids, we have um. Uh, face painting balloons. Um, there's gonna be cornhole tournaments. Um. And then there's gonna be um two. Two different bands that'll be playing Saturday. Um, starting at four, I think it'll be. Four thirty something. Um, and then there's a fan playing at four thirty, then there's gonna be an hour of. The sun of the bands that would be playing and then we'll have the um Saturday nut evening one. Um, that will be playing, so. Should be a fun company. So anybody who wants to volunteer, help out. Just show up, we'll put you to work. We do have ten members of the DDA, so. I'm making them all work, but.
Any other committee highlights?
Uh, the only thing that came up in planning was the um. Restaurants downtown wanted a variance, um, right now they're required to have solid colored umbrellas. We decided to allow them to. Alter that only if approved by council. So technically, right now, they should.
Oh, that's.
They should have been. Sending us photos of what they would like to put out umbrellas. We didn't wanna give them a hundred percent control, just because some of those advertisements aren't always appropriate, so. Um, so we did decide on that, you know, so if you see that come up probably at next council meeting, that's why.
The ordinance reads, uh, the very last line says that you ha- it has to be. What? Like, we get to choose whatever it is. And we, the bars got their umbrellas for free. And so then it, you know, when I went back through the ordinance, I'm like, well, it does say that, so we're pretty much gonna strike that from the. Um, ordinance and change it to this approval of the city council, and if you might change the umbrellas.
Were they given solid color ones, colored ones by the city and then they like got rid of them and replaced it with?
No, not this year, this, not this year, what, once they they got these freaking fellows. They put them out and then I went to the ordinance and said, oh crap, this is in here. Um, we, you know, we have the red ones, so they we normally did, but this year they were doing those. Um, so we're kind of backtracking after we kind of said they could. And then I brought it to the planning to say, hey, something we really need, or can we work with that, if they're like, oh, you like these and. They're much nicer umbrellas to tell you the truth. And as you see, ours fade very fast, so we're having a volume, so. And.
Cost savings for us, as long as it still looks professional and.
Like two dogs wanted to put, you know, uh, we wanted to get a brawler head dog, you know, so. It kind of started with that and then Mike got these umbrellas for both of ours and.
Yes, it takes into others both have like your, is it beer branded? I can't even tell you, but they're like blue and white.
Yeah.
Tied up.
It's a different, are different. I mean, they're front of a bar, so yeah.
But that's the concern is like the public. Which of beer brands or something?
I don't know.
We lose control, we just say put up whatever we want.
Right.
I don't know.
So they're still, they still have to get approval.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Those political umbrellas.
I wasn't gonna go there, but yeah, yeah, one hundred percent, yeah, yeah, or worse.
Yeah, if the bars start feuding, you know.
Yeah, so that'll be on next.
Well, depends on how long it takes to get this ordinance changed and we're working with Mike to. It is second, what were you wording and stuff?
Anything else to the committees?
Uh, DPW had Looking Glass Terrace came and they would like the council to. Consider they're basically they're flooded. Every spring and if we have really heavy rains, I think even potentially later and there, so every year they're having to repair two units. Um, they were quote from. Forget the guy's name, Alawasso, to tie the main storm drain running to the city's drain. Right now they have a drain, but it's connected to nothing. This, there's been conversations with the city about it to. Multiple years, probably multiple councils, the way it sounds like. They have a quote for just over five thousand. You're tied to it, they would like the city to consider covering half of that cost. Because it does apply to the city's road that goes into Looking Glass. So the thought process was long term and beneficial to the city in that roads, it's getting placed next year as well as also benefit with less terrorists. So that is wrong. We didn't put it on the agenda, but listen to that, so they're really like the council made the decision on it.
They would like us to make an decision on it tonight?
Yes.
We, we have been working with Dave um. For years and Dave worked with his um vendor and got us the quote, so.
And it's a ninety day quote.
It's a ninety day quote. And. And I'm talking as someone on Looking Glass Board right now, um, so Looking Glass Board said we're ready to move forward with this, um. We have two units that we're putting thousands of dollars in because of the flooding and we can't afford that, um. We're struggling and we're we're ready to have it crammed and. You know, these were built back in the seventies, we don't know what happened in the seventies, um. But we're ready just to go forward and um.
Make some.
Yep, it's done.
How does that work? It's me, it's that aren't on the agenda.
Greg wanted to put it on your August agenda, um, just so that everybody has information. And can vote on what exactly. Is gonna be done, you know, what?
This will have expired by then.
I.
Do you know when the quote was done, I mean?
So and the quote was not. While we've been talking with Dave, Dave was the one that got the quote. He brought that, it's his vendor that he uses, that he trusted. You know, waiting another month, then we're, you know, another month and then we're. September.
It's already been years.
Yeah, th- this is nothing new.
But I, is there even, there's nothing even even in here, yeah, I mean.
That kind of would have been, I mean, when when we were at DPW. We asked if we could.
Right, but.
Send it to council.
I. I have to tell him what's on the agenda and then he he tells me what to put on it and he said, we'll put it up. I don't, I mean, we did. He didn't know about it until I told him.
We've got a motion and a second now?
No, we have not, like, right now.
I, I don't think we. I don't know. You don't think we can motion, it's great to do, hold up on discussing it, that's me.
Yeah, I mean, that's what his philosophy is to.
So what information will he want um? To go on the August?
Um, I don't know, you you do you had some kind of a history? A little bit and uh. I don't know exactly what you know, just Greg wanted, he just thought that.
Still discretionary on our part, we can just decide to do this, I mean. Again, I I'm not really familiar with. The terrace board or or if they're not private or all that, I mean. What happens i- if Leonard's hardware decides there there's lots flooding and they want help from us? Where where is the, I mean, how do we pick and choose who we help and who we don't help?
Well, it's a city road, the road that goes into Looking Glass Terrace is the city, it's not owned by Looking Glass Terrace.
So is, I I was, again, I'm just that, is it a city drain or not?
Drain is not, they wanna connect to one.
But it is within the eastman of the road.
Inside, you don't think it is, it's outside, it's outside of parking, so it would be outside if I were going right there. Not twenty two. Sixty six was banned.
Local is left, correct, okay, how much is that, point two to?
I guess we'll put it on August, we'll just be Looking Glass Terrace. Board will need to know what you need from them to bring to the August.
Okay.
And and we went to DDW. Again, we've been working on this for months or years, um. We went to them to discuss it, so um.
Right, unfortunately, normally we have a week between DPW and the council and it ended up being yesterday, so. I think, you know, that's why. You know, normally would have had a week and you can put it on the agenda, I mean.
Okay. But you'll let us know what.
Yes.
Looking Glass needs to get.
Yep.
For that.
Yeah, I'll I'll, you know, discuss it with Greg and see what he wants on the.
So so I mean, that's my question, then, is it, are we legally bound to do this?
No.
To anybody else?
Well, I mean.
I I mean, that's why I I always thought we should have a city attorney at a meeting because that's what they're there for is to tell us whether they're.
No, I I there's there, I don't believe there's any legally bound, I mean. The Doyle. Apartments, they had to do the exact same thing and we paid. So I mean, I mean, that's just an example, but only because it's pretty much the same thing that they. Need to pay for that. But I mean, I don't think that the, um, I think this is just the Looking Glass asking for help.
Yeah, it can.
They're looking for help, but there's also looking for some clarification, I mean. I've been on DPW not very long. I, there is no definitive about what's going on there, the culvert in the road that the city owns is destroyed, which is probably causing part of the drainage issue. So city-owned property that isn't maintained is causing part of the backup, which is caused part of flooding. The drain that.
The drains within. Five foot of there, probably, culvert.
I I can't imagine. And here's the thing, all this happened before any of us had anything to do with City of Langford. I can't imagine that was designed, this isn't some fifty five gallon drum that was buried, this is a. Concrete.
Really.
Hatch basin with a.
Cast iron.
Cast iron top that goes nowhere, there had to have been a plan. For it to go somewhere.
Well, you make, I wonder if they did it and then, you know, in the future they were gonna. Hook it up.
Or there's one of those handshake agreements back in the seventies, like, oh, hey, this this sewer is gonna end up coming with.
Well, I think that's how the city um became property of the road too, was that it. It wasn't originally and then it became.
It was a handshake agreement.
Yeah.
Would it deserve one catch nation or two?
There is two.
I seen another one, I drove there today.
There's one when you first go in and then on the other side of them parking lots is a cycle.
And they're connected.
And they're connected, guys.
You did verify that for sure.
Yes.
Okay.
We died them.
So it's just standing water.
Not in the.
And I, and I get it from Greg once to.
Go straight.
To do that, I I understand that, but like I said, David and I.
What's that?
Just since, and I've been on the board since twenty.
Yeah.
So it's been five years that we've been.
Right.
Just be nice to have a clean slate, this is what everyone's.
Ready to be done.
Let's get this problem fixed and then moving forward. We don't have any of this gray or ambiguity, which no one knows who's doing a lot of what's happening.
And I, and as we've been talking. I don't think there is documentation. So other than putting on the agenda, I don't know what Greg's. Because we've been asking for five years, show us what we have and and no one has it, right? We we just need it repaired, whether. Did he help sell or whether Looking Glass, um.
How many times has this flooding taken place in approximately? How many times has this flooding taken place in approximately what?
Well, in the five years I've been on, we've had to repair um the two units um. Two to three times. It's costing us thousands of dollars that. Nonprofit. Does not have. So it it's gotta, we we have to do it. So if we have to wait till August. We'll have the board come back in August and. We'll just need to know what you guys need from from us.
Yeah, knowledge of feels, you know, kind of, no.
Okay. Anything else in the internet committee? The other items. I'm gonna turn to adjourn the meeting. So.
Alright, second.
Alright, all in favor?
Hi.
Meeting adjourned.
Greg, we need to think on someone. So.
Baby now.
Yes.
That is.
Are you still alive?
Yes.
Yes.
Due date. Just run. One goes over the school and one goes into jail.